You said there's no citizens' club? Did everybody get a chance for three minutes of previous meeting?
I'm in favor. Opposed?
Motion carried. Correspondents? I have... The Region Eight Planning and Development Council meeting will be Thursday, October seventeenth at twelve thirty. Is that the one you go to then?
Uh, yeah. That and the Mineral County Development, once you prefer.
Well, I'm gonna be out of town for this one.
All right, I'll go to that one.
Okay. Let me know when the other one is. If you need me there, I'll go.
Okay, well, Mineral County Development is the one you want me to be on.
Oh, yeah, okay. The Region Eight's the one I usually like to go to.
Yes.
But I'm gonna be out of town for the library.
Well, if you want me to, I'll go.
Okay.
All right.
You're gonna go be at the library or you work on Thursday?
No, I'm on Thursday. I've got it on my phone.
Okay.
And where's that meeting? Where is that meeting taking place?
Region Eight, Peter'sburg.
Peter'sburg.
And Lester Kip Clifford brought me in a paper that Julie Cidair, uh... She's our resident over in the Mid-Ride. She's ninety-eight years old. She's the oldest senior in Piedmont and participated in the Senior Citizen Club. She recently received a special award for being the oldest competitor in the Mineral County Senior Olympics. I think he brought a picture down, so I'm gonna try to finagle it into the newsletter this month. Never mind. That she got her oldest competitor.
Ninety-eight years?
Ninety-eight years old.
Well, I can move on. I've probably never seen ninety-eight.
So do I with ninety-eight.
I'm trying to see what she did. I'll try to finagle that into the newsletter. And tomorrow's Mineral County United Way Days of Caring and Sharing. And I've got five people coming up. Four from the County United Way volunteers, and I have a community service worker. Ernie's gonna take them around town, and we're gonna get all the benches painted. And whatever, and the community service worker needs sixty hours, so whatever needs done, weeds around town or whatever. He'll get, he'll stay till the sixty hours are done. But the other people were only here for three hours. It's just the yearly thing County United Way does in the community to try to clean up the community. And we just chose to have the benches and everything through town painted, so hopefully after tomorrow, the streets will look a little bit better. They're gonna do the trash cans and the flyer barrels, the ones that need the paint go on. And whatever else he needs them to do.
Hey, Paula, can I add something to that?
What?
I was approached by, um... One of the counselors from Old Burlington Hall. And they asked me if we needed some assistance. And it's the same type of assistance. Apparently, the residents over there have so many community service hours that they have to put in. So I asked him, what can they do? He said they can paint, they can cut grass, they can pull weeds, they can do anything. So that might be somebody else that...
Give me the information, I'll get ahold of them.
Uh, this was Benny Toami.
Okay, cool.
That approached me.
Okay.
So I'm sure we can contact Benny or Mike Price.
'Cause the one time we was talking about doing the lines in the lead to parking lot and for the slanted parking. To get rid of that long parking over there.
We need lines painted here and there too. Up on the Hanford Street and all the way out across Hanford Street. The park, or the curb something.
Yeah, and I can get some, get, get him to do that painting up there. We still got, uh, yellow and white and blue paint.
He's got sixty hours, so whatever you can get him doing, get him doing it, keep him busy. And whenever they come back and take that, whatever you call it, front of the library out. Cluster.
I told you what I was planning to do.
Yeah. Did they ever say they was coming back?
I haven't heard a word. I, I thought they would at least, uh, contact us.
I'm gonna kill myself on that before they come take it out.
But my suggestion is taking...
He was talking about cutting it, but since it was a state project, I don't know if we should touch it. You know what I mean?
Well, I'm kinda afraid this winter, that one wall's gonna build that water, that ice and stuff up right against your steps. And that's gonna be one heck of a bad mess, 'cause that water don't have anywhere to go.
I know when they were putting it in, I'd asked to see if I could have that marble for Judy Rocko put in there, and they said they couldn't do anything out of the realm of their job description. Then after they were done, I said, where does job description come from? Because that's a hazard. And they said that they would take it out.
And then the guy was here that Dan said that's unacceptable. And he, he marked right up there, you can still see the white letters, "No." And I thought, well, they'll have some, one of the couple of guys from that group, from that, uh, Kaiser, to just take care of it.
They're not even, they're even down in Kaiser now.
They're not.
Oh, they're still working that one?
Yeah, yeah. They're going out to the Wilmore.
Oh, okay. They were in front of my ants for the longest time. And if somebody needs to come up and get that out, or somebody gets hurt on it. Okay. Officer reports?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple things. On the fourteenth, we're gonna have an auditor in here. This will be our actual audit for the city. Um, so we're process of preparing for that. Carrie Phil and I and, uh, Mike, um, Ryan. And, uh, so hopefully, I know, I think we've made a lot of progress over the years. But this audit will at least let us know where we're at. And that's what I wanna find out, where, where, where are we at? And what improvements do we need to make?
Is this under new business, that we gotta make a motion to accept the contract? Did they send the contract in?
Uh, they sent a contract, yes. So, I guess.
They didn't say how long they'd be here, just till it's done?
Just till it's done. I told them, they told us, to us, Carrie's.
Okay.
Heard different, but that's all, that's all they told me. But that is gonna happen on the fourteenth. And I hope. So that's where we're at with that. Like I say, it's the first audit for me, first audit for Carrie. So it'd be a learning process. We try to know where we're at and what improvements we need to make. And we'll make those improvements for the town. The stage that I brought up weeks ago, that wanted to try to put in back there, I got a contractor that is looking at that for me. And going to help design something there. So hopefully here in the next little while, I have something to bring here and present. And, uh, we can say yea or nay and go from there, but it's, it's a beginning. And, uh... Uh, so, like I say, hopefully within the next couple weeks, I'll have something. That's all I got.
Rick?
All righty.
And let's see here, we got cameras installed down at Soul Building. They're recording. We got all the swings fixed again. Uh, we put some more fill in that sinkhole on Rat Tail. It took about four ton of bug dust and we put, uh, tar into it to hold it in there a little longer. Uh, we managed to get the data loggers working up at the water plant. We were data logging now, which they haven't been working for a few, few years. Uh, had the guys go around town here because all these leaves falling and clean top the grating off, so they don't bug up. Uh, DEP was here today and went around for his inspection. And looked at our fuel tank out here, down to muffin monsters, the CSOs, all that. I did talk to the State Road about trying to get a guard rail or some kind of railing up down here on the sidewalk here by the pit stop going up Child's Avenue. And a couple of val, valyries out here on Main Street, like down in front of, uh, the old bank there. 'Cause you can see tar marks where they're coming up on that sidewalk. And they're getting pretty close to that fire hydrant. Uh, at once it's maybe a foot away from the fire hydrant. I haven't heard nothing back on that. And I was back up at Miller's again on that sewer. They were trying to say it was clogged again, it wasn't. But just to be satisfied arguments, I told him we threw up, run the jet in there again tomorrow, and that's it. That's all I've got.
Okay.
Well, we've, uh... I've talked to Verso here, that the best news we had was the fact that they're going to back off a little bit on taking us off of the, uh, the... Their water for a while. They didn't say it was gonna be until July of next year. They said it would be an adequate amount of time. And what that means to me is they went us off as quick as possible, but they're still not gonna just push us away. Uh, as far as, uh, our bond issue for the four hook into the raw water, since Westernport won't let us do that, that's no longer in play. It's now void, so there is no bond. Uh, we have to reapply for everything that we're gonna do in the future. Which, uh, I thought that was not really fair. Out of Westernport, they let us go for funding and everything else and then say, no, you can't do it. But that's the way it was, and they're a business just like we try to be, so that's the way it is. On the other hand, I've been trying to, uh, look at other ways or other means that we can supply water here. And been talking with the Justin Callahan from the Army Corps of Engineers as far as putting an intake in the Potomac River. It requires a 401 permit that I've been working on. It's gonna take about three to six weeks to find out anything about that. And another thirty days after that to get a permit to actually make the project shovel ready. But we're not on the Army Corps of Engineers twenty-twenty budget. Their budget, their budgets year started October first of this year. And with that in mind, trying to get on the budget, they said it wasn't, wasn't impossible to get on the budget. But we needed some legislative intervention. So I have contacted David McKinley, Alex Mooney, Carol Miller from the, uh, from the Congress lady. Senator Manchin's office through Michael Garcia. Uh, then I went through Shelley Capito's office with Max Hayden. And they're all lobbying to try to get us on the twenty-twenty budget. That's the first thing that we really need to do, is to be on the budget. And then we can move forward with going with the permitting and this and that. We have a plan in the book from, it done read up initially as a, uh, for a draw-off out of the Potomac or an intake, or whatever you wanna call it. And on that side of the fence, I've, uh, contacted Verso again to see if we could possibly put a draw-off in the deep side of the lake, right across from their intake. And they said that that was a possibility, that, uh, they would probably grant an easement to put the substation in and the pump house. Nothing in rain, nothing casted in stone. And that's where we're at right now with that. The Army Corps will, if they, if we get on the budget and all, the Army Corps will fund up to seventy-five percent. A pretty sure fifty percent. But, uh, it can go up to seventy-five percent, depending on the needs and the necessitation of the project. So I'm moving forward with this 401 permit, trying to get it in place. And the 401 permit is a water quality permit. Uh, that's, uh, the issue that we have to deal with as far as the quality that we can treat. And then we get the actual permit to put in the draw-off on the river. So, uh, and I've been in touch with almost everybody I can possibly think of. I got a whole two pages here that I've been contacting. And, uh, I think we've got some of the right people that's moving at this, because I have been getting calls back from people that, uh, work for the governor, the congressman, and, uh, the Congress lady. So it's looking better and better every day, but, you know, I still can't say what's gonna happen. Now, uh, I'm going through another process of looking into our water line up on the hill coming down. That, everyone from the funding agencies say that they, they just don't even wanna talk about it. But, uh...
Who finds out? The one for the water plant?
The, the one from the, from our intake up on Savage.
Oh, okay.
Down this way. Uh, as far as getting a permit out of there to clean that out, it's a quick, it's just as bad as getting this 401 permit. So just for a backup, I'm trying to work that issue too. Uh, a fellow called and offered his assistance, it was an engineer on the project over here years ago. And I've been looking, working the team on where everything's at, what the flows are, and how much of this pipe is deteriorated. But the pipe coming from up there is in really bad shape. And that is a way more expensive job than making a draw-off out of the river, so... Okay, that's all I got.
Yeah, I had one thing I wanted to add. Uh, I contacted, uh, Verso the other day about this school over here. Um, I just think it would be wonderful, we had that school, they're not gonna do anything with that school. To give that back to the town or let the town have access to it some way, somehow. I wanna get the conversation started. We could turn that thing into a recreation center, a community center. I mean, the, uh, the things, it's limitless, the things we can do if we had our school back.
We've got meetings every time.
We could have meetings, we could have a lot of things. Um, imagine being able to get that school on back, these kids playing on the school on and in our, and in our school once again. So they're not gonna do anything with that. They're not gonna do anything with that. I'd at least like to get the conversation started. And I contacted Glenn Gilbert the other day. I talked to you, Greg, the other day, I was over at Union Hall. And, uh, I'd just like to get the conversation started, and whatever we have to do, and make a formal request, I'll call in and ask them. But if they need something from you, Paula, or whoever, or however they need it, a request, you're not gonna do anything with the school. Consider, um, turning it, returning it back over to the city of Piedmont, um, and let us use it. But, uh...
Well, Glenn Gilbert already has a request from the city.
Okay.
I sent it to him back in May or June. And we had the same conversation, but, uh, he was telling me that this buyer that wanted to buy up the whole lot included that school. Now, what happens to it from there, who knows? Uh, like you said, you don't get started on nothing unless you start it, so...
You gotta start, you gotta start somewhere, so that's what I'm gonna do, just start the conversation. Uh, wherever it goes, I think it would be a plus, we can get that for the, for the town.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, it would. That's all I got.
Okay, Robbie was gonna try to make it, apparently, he couldn't make it down. Um, Dakota Spear's supposed to come up tomorrow or Friday and be sworn in as the other officer. The forenews report, you already gave that? I don't have anything under unfinished business, the new business. Does Carrie have the contract from Ferrari? Is her price set, you know, by?
Uh, she showed me the contract and the price, and I'm surprised she didn't choose you. I mean, I don't remember one more that's up my head, but, uh...
They're the only ones that would take it, aren't they?
Right.
And it's gotta be done, so we have to take them. They're the only ones on the list that would take.
They're the only ones.
Okay. Okay. Have a motion for, to accept the contract?
Uh, the price was six thousand eight hundred and... Uh, I, it was six thousand eight hundred and something, but, yes, we gotta, we gotta have an audit. And they're the only ones that can do it, so I make a motion that we, uh, contact, uh, Ferrari and associates and get things rolling, or sign the contract.
Second.
I second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anybody got anything else?
Uh, the only other thing that I have to add on the water situation is the fact that we did send all the necessary paperwork to the Corps of Engineers, such as, uh, a letter of intent to start a project. And a letter of intent to, or the letter of intent also included, uh, the funding, but our engineers are up in the air, whether the Corps is going to do the engineering.
Is that the one with that?
Yes, to Mr. Morrow.
Mr. Morrow, yeah.
Uh, so that's, uh, all the... Ts has been crossed and the Is dotted as far as I'm concerned, but now it's up to some of our legislative people and, and the Corps of Engineers to pull us out of this mess. I had a good conversation with the fellow from Manchin's office today that is, he's, gave me about nine callbacks already, and he's working pretty diligently on it, so hopefully he gets somewhere.
And Verso is gonna give us more time? They're not happy, but they're going to?
Well, what it was is, they have a contract with Luke.
Until November?
And they have to, is that right?
November twenty-twenty.
Well, the ours, they tell us July first of twenty-twenty. Now, they might have a contract with Luke there, but they're telling us to get off of there. So I don't know which way it is. I, I haven't really seen the contract or don't know, but actually...
When we went to that meeting, I remember them saying ours was November twenty-twenty.
Was it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, maybe it was, I don't know. I, I didn't, uh, actually take a lot of notes on that, because I think if we do get a project going, hopefully it, everything's done by November, and we can be shovel-ready by the end of February and have things wrapped up in somewhere in, from ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
That'll be awesome.
Can I ask you a question on the water, Ron?
Yes.
If you put the intake in across from their intake, what's the intent on getting the water here? Back through the lines that currently exist?
No, see, they're...
Or running new line on the West Virginia side of the river?
Well, it, it's only gonna be about, uh, eight hundred feet of line to connect to our line.
Oh, is that right? Where's your line?
It, it goes right out here, uh, on the other side of the, and crosses underneath the river and tracks, where the bridge comes across the, uh, to...
Wooden Bridge. The Wooden Bridge, yeah.
Our line's on it. So it, it's what?
Because you're talking all the way up across from the filler plant, right?
Yeah. But the way the, with the bend in the river and coming this way, you know, it only comes out to, I said eight, eight hundred feet, but it comes out to less than eighteen hundred feet.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, if you'd go the way the bend in the river is, it's something like twenty-two feet, twenty-two hundred feet, but...
Does that entail the line that's currently on the bridge?
The line that's currently on the bridge will be done away with.
'Cause I know that's their big concern.
Yes.
They want the line off the bridge.
Well, that's why they're offering to try to help us out as far as easements. They want the line off the bridge, and we want that line underneath the tracks there and stuff out. 'Cause we had breaks and stuff in there, and it was terrible. It, you know, uh, a lot of these guys say that, oh, you can dig under there with tobacco. Well, that's the person we need over there digging. Because, uh, we all was over there for three days, wasn't Rick? And there was a lot of hand digging. You know, we could take the ties off from underneath the rails, but the way the track comes around this way, you go to scoop it up, bending the rails this way, so you can't... You know, you can break it loose with shoveling it out with the shovel, I mean, and it was freezing cold over there, our water pumps was freezing up and everything else, and, uh, it's just not something, it's something that I really wanna see going. And so does Verso. So if we do this, this way, it, it's really no more pipe than what it would be to put new pipe out across that way. Because you're on the other side of the river now.
Yeah.
And you're getting that, that liability of the bridge away, away from everybody. So, you know, it's a, it's a win-win situation if, uh, the... We did find out though that, uh, West Virginia owns half the river, so that's a big plus. Now we can work with West Virginia DEP and, uh, DNR versus the whole federal...
CSX don't come into play at all?
What was that?
CSX don't come into play at all?
We already have a permit to come under, under, up here. We would have, probably have to contact them that we are doing it, but it's been lined, and there's a pipe through there right now, ten-inch pipe through there. So it, and we did find the permits, they're all to date, they're there. So that, there's no, other than the River Commission, well, not the River Commission, but the DNR and the DEP and the Health Department. 'Cause the Health Department has to come in and say, okay, you, your water quality's fine, you can do it. So there's three different organizations that has to come in there, and this 401 permit covers ninety percent of that. You have to have that first thing, then you can get the actual permit to do the project. And, uh, the DNR's... And, uh, the DNRs, the ones that, uh, don't want you to kill any pearl crabs or anything else, yeah. So, you gotta have them on site, so.
Okay.
Uh, it's, it's a process. But, uh, we, we need to be independent. I mean, our, our city needs their independency, rather than being stripped to someone that can raise our water bills at will. No, uh-
No argument here.
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't know where, where the water bills are gonna go to. I'm sure that they're gonna make us do something as far as the increases go. But I don't think it's gonna be as drastic as what it was for the other project to come through there. Cause that was the pay for the, the, the water that we would've been metering, which would've been somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, well, you can figure it up, a dollar five cents a gallon for, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. So, that's, that's pretty ridiculous, you know? And then our water plant would go completely do, surrender.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, next meeting will be October twenty-third. Motion for adjournment?
I take a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.